This is the Thursday, July 12th, 2012, meeting of the zoning board of examiners and appeals. Would you call the roll, please?
Timothy Vig.
Here.
Dean Cars.
Here.
Jeff Ron.
Here.
Joshua Fink.
Here.
Ann Denny.
Here.
Kate Williams.
Here.
Dale Patrick.
Here.
John Dunham. Deanna Wallad.
We have a quorum this evening for those in attendance for any motion to pass before the zoning board. A majority of the fully constituted board must vote in favor of the variance. The fully constituted board consists of nine members, so there are seven in attendance. A majority of the fully constituted board means that there will need to be five affirmative votes in order to pass a variance. Prior to us moving on on our agenda, we do have one postponement this evening, so for anyone that's in attendance for case 2012-080, that is Agenda item H6, we have a request from the petitioner for postponement before us this evening, and I would entertain a motion from a board member to postpone that case to the August 9th meeting. Mr. Fink.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we postpone case number 2012-080, petitioner Theodore Mallett, to the August 9th board meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Denny, you've indicated you would second that?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to that postponement? Thank you. Seeing none, that case has been postponed, so again, anyone here for 2012-080, that case has been postponed. We have no minutes before us this evening. Moving on, special order of business, executive sessions, disclosures. Are there any disclosures to announce this evening? Mr. Fink.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This really isn't a disclosure as to any conflict, but I did want the board to know, and I do apologize, I will have to be leaving by 9:15. So I will be here until then, but then we will be down to a six-member board.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fink. Ms. Denny.
Yes, I was not present at the April 12th, 2012, meeting, and will be abstaining from voting on resolution 2012-009.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Mr. Patrick.
Yes, for the record, I was not present at the June 14th, 2012, meeting, but I have reviewed and listened to the meeting minutes and will be able to vote on that.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick. Mr. Vig.
Yes, for the record, I was not present at the June 14th meeting. I have listened to the meeting audio, reviewed the materials, and am prepared to participate in approval of resolution 2012-014.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Mr. Fink.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I do have a disclosure. My apologies. I was not present either at the April 12th meeting, and so I will be abstaining from voting on resolution 2012-009.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Are there any other disclosures? I do have a disclosure. I was not at the June 14th, 2012, meeting. However, I have listened to the meeting audio and reviewed the materials and am prepared to participate in approval of resolution 2012-014. Mr. Vig.
I would like to disclose in a couple of cases this evening. Case 2012-082, my family is friends socially with the Schneiders applying for this variance. I have no other interest of any sort. I think I can render an opinion on that if the board sees fit to allow me to participate.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Are there any other disclosures? Seeing none, and...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I do have a note.
Oh, you did. I apologize, Mr. Vig.
In the case 2012-081, the petitioner is, to my knowledge, employed by the Metanouskas who sit in a borough in the purchasing department, and my company does substantial amount of work for the borough. I don't know the applicant personally or have any dealings with him, but there is a potential interest there that I should disclose.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Do you or your firm have a substantial part in the present action that's before us this evening?
None whatsoever in this action.
And, okay, thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Vig regarding his disclosure? With respect to that case, I think it would be good for the record to get a motion from a board member with respect to Mr. Vig's participation. Mr. Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to direct Board Member Vig to participate in case number 2012-081.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Mr. Fink, you've indicated you would second that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on that motion? Is there any opposition? Seeing none, Mr. Vig, you were directed to participate in that case? Mr. Vig, I don't want to cut you off if there are others.
No, I'm finished.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vig. Are there any other disclosures? Seeing none, and doing the math, for those in attendance and those that are, have, I believe we can pass both, I believe that we are okay to hear both or pass both resolutions that are on our consent agenda this evening, so I would entertain a motion with respect to the consent agenda. Mr. Vig, you've moved to approve the consent agenda?
I do.
Thank you. And Ms. Williams, you've indicated you would second. Thank you. Is there any opposition to the approval of the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved with the understanding Ms. Denny and Mr. Fink have abstained from voting on 2012-009. Moving on our agenda, there are no appearance requests this evening, no unfinished business, nothing on a regular agenda. Brings us to our public hearings this evening. What I will, before we get started with our first case, I would like to read the order of business with respect to variance hearings. The chair shall introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. The variance case number and the name of the applicant shall be read into the record. The board shall hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. The board shall hear a brief staff presentation outlining the variance, not to exceed 10 minutes. On conclusion of the staff presentation, the board members and the applicant may then direct questions to the staff through the chair. The applicant shall give his or her presentation, not to exceed 10 minutes. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant, who must convince the board by a preponderance of the evidence that the variance should be granted. On conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the board members and the staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the chair. The hearing shall then be open for public testimony. Each person has three minutes. All persons who testify may be questioned by the board, staff, or the applicant. On conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal, three minutes each. The board shall proceed to develop oral findings and conclusions with regard to the variance and disposition of the variance. The staff shall reduce the oral findings and conclusions to writing for subsequent adoption by the board at a later meeting. The matter then rests with the board, and the chair asks for a positive motion from the board. Our first case this evening is 2012-070. Before we get started with the staff presentation, can we make sure that the applicant is here for this case? He's indicated he's present. With that, who from staff will be presenting this? Ms. O'Brien? Could you provide us with the sufficiency of notice, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On May 22nd of this year, 130 public hearing notices were mailed. As of today, six notices were returned unclaimed, and one notice was returned stating no objection. After the, an additional notice was received after the packet was printed but was included in the board's packet, and that was a notice strongly objecting, excuse me, strenuously objecting to the variance. And those riders lived directly south across the alley from the petition site. Excuse me. Creekside Investments is requesting a variance from AMC 214140H to C to allow construction of a two-story addition to an existing structure that would encroach into the required rear yard setback. The site is College Village subdivision, block 1, lot 9. It's generally located on the south side of Northern Lights Boulevard and west of Lake Otis Parkway. The, a brief history of the property, it contains 8,650 square feet. It was originally platted in 1959. The existing structure was built in 1962. It was zone B1 in 1965, and in 1985, the B1 district was repealed, and it was reenacted as the B1A Local and Neighborhood Business District. It is with the enactment of the B1A that the requirement for a 25-foot rear yard setback was required on a commercially zoned lot when it adjoined a residential zoning district. The proposed addition will, if approved and constructed, would encroach 11 feet into that 25-foot rear yard district. As mentioned, it's a two-story addition to be added to the south side of the existing building, and in reviewing the seven standards that are required to be met in order to approve a variance, several of the standards were not found to be met. The lot is rectangular in shape, it's a regularly shaped lot. It is not impacted by slope or wetlands, major drainage ways, or any other sensitive environmental feature that would limit the developability of the lot. It is similar in nature to the other lots, the other commercially zoned lots, in terms of shape and slope, but it is not unique in relation to the other lots. The second standard was not met because the physical characteristics were not found to limit how the property could be developed. Number three could possibly partially be met. Due to the length of time the structure has existed, the entire site is paved from the north to the south boundary, but there may be alternative designs that could be looked at in order to construct the addition in a conforming manner. Now, the variance that's granted, it will not affect the use of the adjacent property. Staff found that this to be substantially met because of the length of time that this structure has existed. However, bearing in mind that it is a one-story and the addition will create a 21-foot tall addition, which would be directly opposite the residential uses to the south. It will not allow a use that is not already permitted within the zoning district, and so standard five was found to be met. The addition did not appear to adversely impact the health, safety, or welfare of the people of the municipality of Anchorage. It is commercially developed, has been since 1962. That's at least as long, if not longer, than the residential development to the south. There is commercial development to the west of this property. The minimum variance, the minimum variance, this is if the, this is the minimum variance that would be required to construct an addition as proposed by the petitioner. However, staff had no information on whether alternative designs could accomplish the same thing without having to require a variance. As a result, staff could, the department could only recommend denial of this variance request because all the standards were not found to be substantially met. However, if at the conclusion of the public hearing, the board finds that all the standards have been met, there are three conditions that were provided for the board's consideration, and they're printed on page 10 of the packet. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Ms. O'Brien, I do have two questions. On page eight of the staff packet, top paragraph, there's discussion regarding the issue of the alley and that at one time that there was, the setback differed whether there was an alley or not, and that was eliminated in 1984. Could you, it says 1984, did I misspeak something, Ms. O'Brien? Misspeak on that?
Well, it's the first paragraph, yes.
At one time, at one time, it appears that if an alley was present, then the setback was...
Was reduced, Mr. Chair, was reduced to five feet in the B1 zoning district. But, but that is a misprint because the, it should be 1985. That was eliminated when the B1A zoning district was enacted and the B1 zoning district was repealed.
Thank you for that correction. I was just curious if there was any history or knowledge on why that was eliminated. Do you have any knowledge of that? I realize you probably went around then, but...
Mr. Chair, I don't have any knowledge or not aware of the discussion of why that was, when that B1A district was enacted, why the 25-foot setback was instituted regardless of whether there was an alley or not. The only thing I could surmise is possibly it was determined that if there was an, even if there was an alley, a five-foot separation distance was not considered sufficient to buffer the adjoining residential uses, because they also have to, as part of the B1A zoning district, they have to install buffer landscaping along this, in this case, it would be the south property boundary, and that, that will be, it's paved. So, and the buffer landscaping cannot be placed in the alley to satisfy that requirement.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. My second question, on page 13 of the staff packet, the aerial image, and my resolution isn't that great on my copy, however, I'd estimate maybe a third of the lots in this B1A district are built fairly close to that alley, within the setback. Do we have any, do you have any knowledge if there have been variances granted in the past for those?
Mr. Chair, variances, I did not see any variances being granted for those structures. The only thing I concluded, could conclude with that is that this is a very old subdivision, and it may have been developed earlier when there was, before it was even zoned in 1965, and those buildings may have been placed on those lots when there wasn't that requirement.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of staff by the board? Mr. Vig?
Following up on your question, Mr. Chairman, Ms. O'Brien, would that make their status a legal nonconforming situation then? If those buildings were constructed at that early date?
Through the chair, Mr. Vig, if they have not formally been established, they would be considered, if they, if they were built before zoning, they would be enjoying nonconforming rights.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff? Seeing none, could the applicant come forward, please? Could you please state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Randy Kair, spelled K-A-E-R.
Thank you, Mr. Kair. Before we begin, I believe there was a letter in the file that you were, the representative of the petitioner, petitioner is Jose Ramos, is that?
That's correct. Jose Ramos, Creekside Investments LLC.
There it is. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kair. Yeah, on page 21 of the staff packet, thank you, Mr. Patrick. Would you proceed with your presentation, please? And again, keep in mind that you have 10 minutes, and we must find that all seven standards are granted, seven standards are met to grant a variance, so if your presentation will be sure to address the standards.
Sure. Thank you very much. You've already actually touched on a few of the same questions I was going to bring up myself, but I thought first what I would do is tell you, you know, first, why do they want to put the building there in the first place and what the circumstances are. Pretty simple, actually. If you ever ate in his restaurant before, if you walk in the entry, you'll notice that the entry or waiting area is only like five foot by five foot. Immediately to the left, you'd walk into a bar and restaurant area, and so they have inadequate space to put a waiting area. Also, another problem that they have with the property is they've got coolers that are extended off the back of the building, and there's inadequate storage. And so if you were to drive down the alley, you'd look at the back of the building and see literally things that are probably not supposed to be there, boxes, garbage cans, coolers, that sort of thing. So the idea was to clean up the back of the building and put coolers inside. The building is being built two stories, not that the up is going to be used for a restaurant, it would be used for storage upstairs. And their idea was to pull out the existing bar and seating area and make that into their waiting area, then you would walk through into the new bar and seating area. So we're not really trying to increase the actual tables a whole bunch in the facility, we're just trying to make better use of it and clean it up. Couple of things I would point out or go over again, so there's no confusion, there is a setback requirement, and there is a landscaping buffer requirement, and with this plan, we would actually meet the buffer requirement and a sidewalk, so we're not really, actually it would be the only building on the block that conforms to the rear 10-foot buffer zone for landscaping, because it's not installed in any of the other properties. If you were to drive down that alley, you'd notice that the two buildings at the very end are actually built right on the alley. There's no way that the alley could ever be made bigger because it is actually utility easement back there, and there's actually power poles that would disallow you from making the alley any wider. In other words, there's telephone poles going all the way through there. On page eight, number two, you did mention that the other buildings do enjoy a nonconforming use, and it was in 1985 that the zoning laws did change is what caused, probably caused that. There is a, on page 13, as you noted, there was a strong denial from the, one of the app, or petitioners, not petitioners, but the neighbors. But if you look at, you know, what could their potential complaint be, and they've got trees as tall as telephone poles in their backyard, there's not actually any visible view of their house or any structures from that site, and so I don't think that it would really impact them. If you look at the size of their lot and where their home is built, they've actually got good trees and so forth. The back wall on this new proposed building is actually designed out of blocks, it would be more or less a soundproof or high SDC rating. So if they were to have like an event once a month, which is legal use, where they might have a party for somebody, there could be potential noise, it would actually be a better sound blocking to that side of the building, since there's not windows on the first floor or anything like that. I would say that if the variance couldn't be allowed, they could potentially vacate a lot line and build the other direction, but it would still be a two-story building visible from the neighbors and a conforming use, so you're not really going to stop that from happening, but it would impede their parking. People do pull around and go down that alley, probably delivery trucks and so forth, because you can't pull back out into Northern Lights and then get back the other direction, so everybody does cut through the other way from Kinko's and all those businesses on that block. I think that's all I had, if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kair. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board? Ms. Denny.
Yes, Mr. Kair, you mentioned a possible alternative to the building, the site that we have here on this paper, on this case, so there is an alternative proposal out there?
It is, and there's a problem with it, and I'll tell you what that is. To conform to the zoning code of a 10-foot buffer on the rear, by putting this building on there, you're saying, "I've got a sidewalk and a buffer," so there's no parking behind the building whatsoever. So if you try to make it skinnier and extend it, extend it along the, across the property line, so to speak, you're still going to have to continue that buffer zone along there, which means no parking behind, so you're actually taking away more parking as you go the other way, so it actually starts losing tables inside, defeating the purpose of putting the addition on in the first place. And the, part of the problem, well, I call it a problem, but I've been told that zoning and residential and commercial zoning meet if there's an alley in the middle of the alley, okay? And in this case, we're saying the setback's from the property line. So you have a 20-foot alley, and then you're required setback, and we're not trying to put it up against the alley, we're just asking for a few feet into that so that we can keep the building without having to build across property lines and take away parking, which would defeat the purpose of what we're trying to do here.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of the applicant? Just to follow up to Ms. Denny's question, which I appreciate her asking, I was curious about the same item, and that, you'd mentioned that with that alternative, you would vacate the lot line then, you'd have to replat to allow the building, so the building additions not crossing the lot line then, and...
Yeah, and I don't know if anybody here personally knows Jose or not, and he's got restaurants all over the state, and he basically decided if he can do it this year, he wants to do it, and if not, he's not going to build it at all. So I think it would pretty much kill the project if we're, I mean, just to let you know, it would probably just kill the project as we do things. The parking being eliminated in the back, it's okay on one lot, because you're gaining it on the side, so to speak, but you start building that thing horizontal across property lines, a timing issue, and the fact that you put it in a buffer zone, you're eliminating a huge, huge amount of parking, because you'd have, in the back of the property, you'd have whatever it is, 25 feet, with 10 feet of that being a buffer zone, and it wouldn't allow adequate parking behind the structure, so it was kind of not doable.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions from the applicant, of the applicant by the board? Does staff have any questions of the applicant? Ms. Denny, you weighed in again, if you have another question?
You said that there was a problem with eliminating parking behind the building. If you go ahead with this addition, there will be no parking behind that building, so you'll still lose that many parking spaces. you'll still lose that many parking spaces.
You'd lose that many, but it's, it's exponential when you, when it gets bigger this way, instead of saying, "Hey," right now, they're not really counting that as parking spaces, so they're just building into the space, and you're losing, then you get your ten-foot buffer and a four-foot sidewalk, putting it fourteen, fourteen feet off the alley. If you, if you pull it back to twenty-five feet, and you put a ten-foot buffer there, you're not gonna put any pull-up parking behind the, the building, so you're losing twenty-five feet by the width of two lots, which is a huge amount of space, 'cause they're very small lots in the first place.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vig.
Thank you, um, Mr. Kair, I, I'm kinda focusing on standard number seven, and, and I, I need to understand a little bit better why this is necessary to make reasonable use of the land, um, why that, why that expansion is, is needed, and to that extent. If you can speak to that, please?
I guess, first of all, I'd say, uh, if you look at long rectangular lots, they're hard to build on, um, matter of fact, this, this particular, um, applicant has two lots adjacent to it that he purchased, and part of that's got a shared parking agreement with, um, uh, someone next door, because it's not, um, it's not like they planned Northern Lights at one width and, and kept it that way the whole time. Over time, you'll notice that that road was made wider and taken away, uh, uh, basically frontage from the building, and when they did that, they kind of, um, uh, constricted the parking how you have to get in and out, in other words, it's not real, you wouldn't design it that way today. If you pull in, it's tight, it's, it's not, not very good, and there's, it's an odd amount of space between the front of the building, where there'll be a required buffer, and the building itself, so it doesn't really even lend itself to good parking up there. Um, so, the fact that it's, it's an older building in a, in a new zoning district puts it in kind of an odd duck, you wouldn't build it there today, you know, or, or get away with building it like that, your, your parking requirements will be different. So, to utilize this lot, the only logical way to do it is leave the blank lots blank and just push the building back, and then you're gonna have the, the most amount of parking. If you, if you put it the other way, you really do take out about, um, off of those two lots, about, you lose about twenty-five percent of the usable space of the lots for landscaping buffer in a dead zone.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of the applicant? Seeing none, uh, thank you, Mr. Kair, we'll, um, open the case up for public.
Right, thank you.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify on this case? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. Um, does staff have any rebuttal?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Uh, Mr. Kair, yeah, do you have any, there wasn't any public testimony, but do you have anything for rebuttal? You do have six minutes of time left.
Actually, I think I've said everything I can, thank you.
Uh, he has indicated for the record that he has nothing else to add. With that, the matter rests with the board. Could I please have a positive motion from a board member with respect to this case? Uh, anyone at all? And I, again, I'd encourage board members, even when it is difficult, uh, cases, we will work through it. Uh, Mr. Vig?
Mr. Chairman, in case two thousand twelve zero seven zero, I move that we grant a variance from AMC twenty-one forty, one forty, paragraph two C, in the B one A district, to allow a proposed addition to ex, to an existing structure to encroach into the rear yard setback, subject to conditions one through three on page ten of the staff packet.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Ms. Denny, you indicated you would second that?
Yes, I would second it.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Mr. Vig, would you, um, speak to your motion, please?
Thank you. Um, with regard to standard number one, um, you know, the, the applicant, uh, did speak to some of the exceptional physical circumstances of the property, in that Northern Lights Boulevard may have encroached onto the front buffer at, at one point in time, but, but I don't, I don't see that it, uh, in my opinion, meets, uh, meets the standard as far as the physical circumstances of the lot. Uh, and so, similarly for standard number two, I, I don't believe that this lot, uh, contains any, uh, physical circumstances that would create an undue hardship. Um, standard number three, I think, uh, the hardship is, uh, somewhat self-imposed by the decision to, to expand the, the building in that direction. Uh, standard number four, uh, the variance of granted will not adversely affect the use of adjacent property. Uh, I believe that that standard probably is substantially met. Uh, the presence of the alley there does provide an additional buffer, although that consideration did go away in the B one A zoning district. And I think the applicant pointed out the fact that, uh, the neighbors to the south have a, uh, an obstructed view, or, or their, uh, their lot is somewhat irregularly shaped, facing that direction. Standard number five, the variance of granted will not change the character of the zoning district, I believe that that is substantially met. Uh, I don't think that granting the variance would change the character of the zoning district, nor do I believe that it would adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality, so I believe that standard six is substantially met. Uh, standard seven, I, I'm not sure that I concur with the staff's findings on that being the minimum variance that would make possible a reasonable use of the land, and, and I didn't find the, the applicant's, uh, statements to be compelling that, that that's required to make reasonable use of the land. I, I think there are other alternatives that could be investigated, and they might have impacts of their own, but, um, I think it could, could be made to work, so, um, I'm inclined to vote in opposition to my motion at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Ms. Denny?
Yes, I agree with staff and with Mr. Vig, in that, um, standards number one and number two do not appear to be met. Um, I also agree with Mr. Vig that, um, in variant, in number seven, that, uh, there are alternatives, perhaps a smaller, um, a reconfigured addition, and I also do not intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Are there any other comments from any of the board members? Mr. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I concur with Mr. Vig and Ms. Denny's findings regarding standards one through three not being met, and would like to speak briefly to standard seven as well, and concur with Mr. Vig's finding that standard seven is not met, um, although I'd hope for more, uh, from the petitioner in both their application and in the testimony, I don't feel like that, um, what I was looking for was presented, and can't find that standard seven is met, so I do not intend to support the motion either.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Are there any other comments from any of the board members? I, I, well, would just like to offer, right, this is a difficult lot, and I, we've run into cases similar to this, where it's also a timing function, if this, if this, um, building was constructed in a certain time, no variance is necessary, and, and it looks like that's what was done. Um, I, I also understand, I, I appreciate the, the applicant's response regarding the alternative, and I understand there'd be a, a net reduction in parking, so it, it may not be the, a better, uh, situation, however, I, I do concur with the findings of, of, uh, Mr. Vig, Ms. Denny, and, and Mr. Ron, that, and staff, that, that standards one, two, and three, um, are not met. Again, I, I think it's just kind of, um, but it is a difficult lot, and I appreciate the, the applicant's, um, representatives', um, response to the questions, but I do not intend to support the motion. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, please vote. That motion fails by a vote of seven to zero. I do need to read for the record that every final decision of the board shall, shall clearly state on its face, "It is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case," and that the parties have thirty days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. Our next case this evening is two thousand twelve zero eight four, the petitioner, the Ark of Anchorage, I believe the petitioner, petitioner's representative is here. Um, that we'll have a, uh, as they work their way forward, we'll have a staff presentation. Who from staff is, Ms.?
Francis McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin, would you please provide us with the sufficiency of notice, and, uh, you're welcome to stand there, however, staff's probably got a five, seven-minute presentation. Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin, would you provide us with the sufficiency of notice, please?
On, uh, June nineteenth, a total of a hundred and sixty-nine, uh, public hearing notices were mailed, uh, to the neighborhood. As of this writing, no comments have been received from the airport, uh, Heights Community Council. Uh, two public comments were received in opposition to the variance, um, they are on pages thirty-three and thirty-four of the packet.
Thank you, Mrs. McLaughlin, would you proceed with your presentation, please?
Thank you. Uh, this is a request, uh, from the Ark of Anchorage for a variance from the R one district regulations to permit a residential structure to exceed the maximum allowable lot coverage of thirty percent. The request is to allow, uh, maximum lot coverage of thirty-one point nine nine, uh, percent. Um, the site plan, floor plan, and, uh, elevation, uh, drawing of the, the front, uh, front, the, uh, the, the, uh, east face of the, of the, uh, house are on pages six, seven, and eight of your packet. Um, it, it does not appear that standard number one, uh, is met. Uh, the lot is a standard rectangular shape with access to, uh, Casco Quim Street, um, there are no physical features that constrain the development of the lot. Um, standard number two does not appear to be met, uh, strict application of the R one district regulations would not deprive the, the petitioner of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district. However, the owner points out that the regulation limiting lot coverage to thirty percent is more of a burden to them, because they intend to use the house, uh, for, uh, physically disabled people, and make it ADA accessible. Um, standard number three, um, does not appear to be met, there are no physical conditions that, uh, of the lot arising from slope, stream, wetland, or other physical impediments that directly relate to the need for the variance. The need for the variance is the result of the desire of the applicant to build a new single-story house for physically disabled persons, the request for the variance, uh, is considered self-imposed. Um, standards, uh, four, five, and six, um, are met. Uh, standard number seven, uh, does not appear to be met, uh, a single-family house with a garage and other common features, uh, can be built on the property without the need for the variance. The department finds that standards one, two, three, and seven, uh, may not be substantially met, and therefore recommends denial of the variance. If after, um, uh, public hearing, the board finds that all seven standards are substantially met, they should be, uh, the approval should be subject to conditions one and two on page five of the packet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Mr. Ron?
Thank you, through the chair, Mr. McLaughlin, in this case, does the deck, uh, proposed deck on the rear of the house count towards this lot coverage?
If it's over, uh, thirty inches in height off the ground, then, uh, then it would count towards the lot coverage. Um, I, uh, I don't have an answer to, to your question, maybe the petitioner can respond to that.
The lot is less than thirty, I mean, the deck is less than thirty inches.
Okay, well, we'll, uh, the record will ask questions after your presentation. We appreciate your enthusiasm. Um, are there any other questions? I, I do have a question, Mr. McLaughlin, um, and I apologize, 'cause I think I've asked this on previous cases, and it's been answered, and I forget what the answer was. Um, is there, uh, an administrative variance as far, you know, thirty-one point nine nine percent? When is it close to thirty? Is that what's considered, um, within, um, is there a, a tolerance with respect to that thirty percent in title twenty-one?
Um, I can look that up right now, um, I have it marked, um, it may be a little bit more efficient to return to me with that question. There, there are administrative variances, uh, tolerances, uh, of, you know, a small amount, uh, for yard encroachments. This is not a yard encroachment, this is a, uh, lot coverage, uh, variance, so I don't know if there's a, a, um, thank you. Uh, this would be eligible for an administrative variance, um, per table A, um, Anchorage Municipal Code, Title Twenty-One, uh, Section fifteen, um, oh, one-two, if it was, um, built in error, two percent over, but if it's deliberately intended to be built two percent over, it's not eligible for the variance. Um, if, if the building was built and it was proposed to be thirty percent lot coverage, and then, uh, they accidentally built it thirty-two percent, um, during the final inspection, or they were caught, or, you know, something, then, uh, then they could pay six hundred dollars and be approved for administrative variance. But, because, um, they're going through their proper channels and, and, uh, applying for a building permit, and it was, um, discovered before any building permit was issued, um, then they're, they, they're required to build it within, uh, the required thirty percent. So, it's within the tolerance, but they're not eligible for that process.
Understood, thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Are there any other questions of staff? Um, seeing none, um, the applicant is before us, and, uh, um, could you state and spell your name for the record, please?
My name is Wes Clubb, last name's C-L-U-B-B, and?
Gwen Lee, L-E-E.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Clubb, Ms. Lee, uh, and again, you have ten minutes for your presentation, and if, um, you could speak to the seven standards, please?
This request is, to me, fairly simple from the standpoint of what we're trying to do, and, and I'm gonna go to the, the, the seventh, uh, request from the standpoint of doing it, and it has to do predominantly with the care that will be given to the occupants of the home, and, and these people will most likely be physically, mentally handicapped and in wheelchairs, potentially, and that type of thing. So, we have designed what I believe to be a very modest seventeen-hundred-square-foot ranch-style home that will fit, and we've carefully designed it to meet the neighborhood, uh, standards from the standpoint of how it looks, the streetscape, and those types of things, as well as, the house also has a relatively large, single-car garage, and the reason for that is, is it has to have a banned access, that it has the ability to take wheelchairs in and out of the home. Uh, I'm not gonna say it can't be smaller, but it would be, it would be negative from the standpoint of, of our ability to provide the kind of housing that this is intended. The lot, when it was developed in nineteen, or designed in nineteen, whatever, fifty-some-odd years, ADA wasn't even existing at that point in time. Uh, we also have met with, uh, some people in the neighborhood, as well as I have a letter from the, uh, the chairman of the, uh, uh, community council, although it's done by her from the standpoint of, uh, an individual, because they did not have time to meet, and have the board convene, they don't meet in the summertime, but I really would like to enter this into the record from the standpoint of their, of her support relative to this issue.
And, and Mr. Clubb, you can, you can do that, just for the record, we will need to keep that and keep up- Just for the record, we will need to keep that and keep it for thirty days unless you want to copy back.
No, that's not a problem whatsoever. So really, it boils down to... I mean, I understand the standards and that type of thing. It is a nice lot. There was an agreement made between The Ark of Anchorage and Neighborhood Works. Neighborhood Works is the owner of the lot, leased to The Ark of Anchorage for ninety-nine years from the standpoint of providing housing for the individuals that this property is intended. I think it's a worthwhile cause. This is their fourth house in four years. They intend to do more and integrate their clients into the relative nice neighborhood communities. And I think it's a very positive thing for our neighborhoods. I think it's a very positive thing for Anchorage. And I would really hope that you would be positive towards this request.
Excuse me. Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board? Mr. Rawlins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll repeat that question for the petitioner on the record. How high is that deck supposed to be, again?
Less than thirty inches.
Thank you, sir.
From the standpoint of lot coverage, it meets the standard. It will really be one level. I mean, there won't even be a step out of a garage. And I'll also make a comment from the standpoint of about forty feet of this is a covered porch to make sure that the walkway is clear of snow and that type of thing for people to have access to the house. Forty feet of the hundred-and-twenty-two square feet that's being requested here has to do with that entry.
Mr. Vig.
Thank you. The floor plan on page seven shows a four-bedroom layout. Are all four of those for clients, or three for clients? Do you have a resident manager that's...
Resident manager, three clients. On a twenty-four-hour care basis, these people need to be watched carefully from the standpoint of their needs and that type of thing. So yes, they do have twenty-four-hour care, and there's one person per bedroom.
Okay.
Bathroom designs and those kinds of things are larger than the standards from the standpoint of making sure that they have the ability to have wheelchair access and that type of thing.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of the applicant? Does staff have any questions?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, if you'll have a seat, we'll open this up for public testimony. Oh, yes, please, if you would. Thank you. And we will open it up for public testimony. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Can you state and spell your name for the record, please?
My name is Shirley Iverson, I-V-E-R-S-O-N.
Thank you.
And I live at seventeen thirty-six Cusco Quim since nineteen fifty-eight.
Thank you, Ms. Iverson. And you have three minutes for your presentation.
I would like to state that this piece of property has been an eyesore for many, many years. It was a crack house, and eventually there was a murder that took place, and it was only through community involvement that we got the place torn down and demolished. Originally, we were very concerned with ARC possibly moving in there. There was no discussion at the community council with any of the parties, and it was only because we received the notice of the zoning that we knew that construction was actually going to take place. I did meet with Mr. Clubb and the representative from ARC yesterday, and they showed us the plans and discussed about the property. We were very concerned about the clients that were going to move in there. It is a neighborhood that has, since nineteen fifty-eight, has had young children. They grew up, they moved away. The adults, the kids have come back, they have babies. So it's on our street, we have multiple little babies and young children. So we were concerned about the clients that were going to be in there, and they assured us that these were not going to be people from API that have been let out, that these were going to be generally people that have, are going to be transitioning into later life in these homes, and they will be handicapped mentally and physically and don't propose any harm to the neighborhood. So I guess it's with mixed blessings that it isn't going to be a landlord, rental tenant, crack house, murder joint. You know, it is going to be fairly well-maintained. We did visit some of the houses. They appeared to be well-kept. I went and visited a location, and I saw the yard was well-kept. I don't know what happens after they move in. The representative from ARC said that the clients take care of cleaning the snow and that, but, you know, who takes care of the maintenance after this? Is it ARC? Is it... Who is it? So with mixed blessings, I think this is probably the best. The house appears to be in compliance to the other houses. It's not a two-story monstrosity.
Thank you, Ms. Iverson.
Okay.
Are there any questions of Ms. Iverson? Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to testify? And again, could you state and spell your name for the record, please?
I am Johnny Hayes, H-A-Y-E-S, resident of eighteen oh-one Cusco Quim, which is across the street.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Thank you.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. Both my wife and I are welcome ARC and agree with their mission, setting up residences for continued support of people in need. And so we welcome them to the block. I'm here sort of informationally and thanking the designers for maintaining the scale of our neighborhood with a single-story, single-car garage, much to the same of Ms. Iverson. Those were sort of my concerns, and just wish to express that to the board. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Are there any questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public wishing to testify? If... Well, if... Is... We have a variance before us this evening. If you have any testimony that you'd like to make, you need to... Excuse me, sir. Would you come and speak into the microphone so we could record your... We need to record all dialogue, so...
Familiar with your process.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, then?
My name is David Geiger, G-E-I-G-E-R.
Okay, Mr. Geiger.
I just have a few questions about the proposed coverage of said lot and as it relates to parking. Is the parking on the lot taken into account on the total coverage? And what are they... They say they're planning a garage. I assume that it will have a van full-time for emergency transport and other such purposes. There will be a full-time resident, so that means there's automatically a car for him, for his transport, because he can't be using the house's transport whenever he needs to do something. And I assume there's going to be a lot of visitors coming. These people have friends and family, just like all the rest of us, so what are they proposing to deal with? Because street parking... There's not a house there now, and frequently, there are cars parked there. So what is it going to be like now, in the future, with all this traffic cycling through? I'm just concerned, you know, are they planning on just a single-car space? Is it double-wide, triple-wide? What are they doing for the driveway? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geiger. Are there any other members of the public that wish to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
Did... I'm sorry, did the petitioner have an opportunity to respond, or...
He has... The petitioner has seven minutes of rebuttal time, so after...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Where...
I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. And we'll let the petitioner come forward with their rebuttal time, and you've heard comments from public if you wish to address any of those.
Thank you. I'm Gwen Lee, executive director for The Ark of Anchorage, and to address the concerns about parking, yes, the home has a one-car garage that we anticipate having the van in. When staff come, they would pull in behind. If they went out with the van, there would be that exchange, but they would park off the street. They may park at times on the street. We would encourage visiting. We would hope there's lots of visitors, both visiting with the neighbors and visiting there. When relief staff come, it's expected that the primary staff takes their car and leaves, so there would never be more than the van in the home and a staff car. Sometimes our staff are dropped off. They don't always have their own personal cars. We don't anticipate there being a parking problem. There has not been a parking problem in any of our homes. It's not like a traditional assisted living home that might have many staff coming and going.
I've been to the ARC homes on many occasions, and if you find one car in a driveway, that's a lot. And from the standpoint of visitors, the visitors, from the standpoint of the individuals in the home, I believe the visitation from the standpoint of people visiting them is nominal.
I wish it were more.
A maintenance question was asked about snow removal and that type of thing. The ARC has full-time people that do ground maintenance, that take care of the facilities and that type of thing. They're on call all the time. They have people arranging transportation for their individuals and those kinds of things. So it's really well-structured, very well-run from the standpoint of how they operate the entire business of caring for these individuals. I think that covers most everything that was discussed, I believe. I mean, these are great neighbors. I mean, they really are. And I've been at open houses where neighbors came in and that type of thing. Once these homes are built, the responses are incredibly positive from the standpoint of what we do and how we do them. So again, I hope you're positive towards this.
And in response, I thank the neighbors for coming forward and saying they welcome this. It has been our experience in neighborhoods that families with young children in particular are delighted that their children have the opportunity to grow up next door to someone with a disability and learn firsthand that they're very much like the rest of us, not very different. We all want to live in community. We want to have a home. We want to have a job. We want to have a place to play. We want to be good neighbors. The ARC prides itself on being good neighbors in all of the homes that we have. We invite neighbors in. We love to be invited next door. That's the goal, is that we will be good neighbors.
Thank you. Are there any questions, any additional questions? Mr. Rawlins?
Thank you, through the chair. Mr. Clubb, in your initial presentation, you spoke a little bit to standard seven.
Yes.
And you did make mention of the fact that you can't say the house couldn't possibly be smaller and that it could potentially be smaller. We've heard a little bit about potential impacts, both positive and negative, from granting of the variance.
I understand.
Can you, at this point, tell us what might happen if the variance is not granted?
What would happen is room size would be affected. I mean, a hundred-and-twenty-two feet might like seem like a lot, but when you have to take a hallway that we've designed it so you have the ability to turn a wheelchair and you bring it in by six inches, that's a big deal. If you've ever been around an ADA-structured home and that type of thing, whether it be door sizes, bathroom sizes, everything about it is, in fact, real critical from the standpoint of how we do it. These people live in this home more than you will live in your homes from the standpoint. They're not out about... They don't... They do work. A lot of them do work from the standpoint. You see them in cars, grocery store. You see them in a number of businesses that support the ARC. So from that perspective, it will impact it. It will impact their rooms. And one of the things that we really try to do when we design one of these homes for these individuals is because they spend so much time in their rooms, we give them a little bit more space than an eight-by-eight or eight-by-ten room because they do spend a lot of time in their rooms. It's their sanctuary, if you will. So making it smaller will be difficult, and I would really not want to have to do it if I don't have to.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clubb. With that, the matter rests with the board. Ms. Williams.
Yes. Would you like to go ahead?
You've indicated you would make a motion.
Yes. In case number twenty-twelve dash zero-eight-four, I move we grant a variance from AMC twenty-one point four-zero point zero-three-zero-eight to permit a structure to exceed the maximum allowable lot coverage, subject to conditions one and two on page five of the staff packet.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Denny, you've indicated you would second that?
Yes, I will.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Ms. Williams, will you speak to your motion, please?
Yes, thank you. I am struggling somewhat with standards one, two, and three because the lot is... I don't see any physical circumstances that set that lot apart from other lots in the area. However, I'm somewhat swayed by the argument on the need for the size of the house to meet ADA requirements and also the comfort of the residents of the home. So I'll be interested to hear what my fellow board members have to say about standards one, two, and three. I agree with staff that standard four is substantially met. I don't think that parking is going to be an issue as raised by some of the public who testified today, as well as some of the comments that have been submitted. I mean, it is only a four-bedroom house, and there appears to only be one permanent car there, which would be a van that would be pulled into the garage. And visitors to the house would be sporadic and, you know, leave and not be parking overnight and coming in and out, so I don't think that would be an issue. Standard five, I also agree that that's substantially met as it's a dimensional and not a use variance. Standard six, I also agree that that is substantially met. There were no objections from any of the municipality agencies or identification of any health or safety issues. In standard seven, I do agree that that is also substantially met. It is a de minimis variance request that had they constructed the house and begged for forgiveness later, the variance would be granted. And I do have sympathy with the petitioners for wanting to provide the residents of the home comfortable living quarters and believe the de minimis variance that they're asking for, which is less than two percent, is fine, given those circumstances. So at this point, I'm leaning towards supporting my motion.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Denny?
Yes, thank you.
I do intend to support the motion. I believe that the size of the lot, if you'd probably subtract the deck area and maybe some smaller areas around the house, that it would probably fit within the 30% lot coverage. And even if it was still just a small amount over, I believe that in standard number seven, that it would be the very minimum amount over. As far as having problems with off-street parking, that the neighbors had concerns with, I don't see where there would be any additional parking problems in comparison to what the other neighbors enjoy right now. I'm sure they have relatives and friends visiting and staying overnight, or staying for extended periods, or coming and going, and I don't see where that would be any different, to apply a different standard to this home that the neighbors enjoy at this time. And as far as standards four, five, and six, I agree with staff that those have been met. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Are there any other comments from any of the board members? Mr. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In common with other board member comments thus far, I feel like I'm leaning towards supporting the motion, but have difficulty with standards one and two, and maybe some additional discussion would help push me over the edge. We haven't heard testimony about any exceptional, extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject property. It appears to be a normal lot. But that said, the proposed development fits not only with the normalness of that lot, but based on testimony from the neighbors, appears to fit quite well with the character of that neighborhood. As other board members have commented, we're looking at what appears to be a de minimis less than 2% increase over the allowable lot coverage. The proposed house is a one-story structure that fits with the neighborhood and meets the needs as stated. So, that's all I have, but would appreciate more discussion perhaps on standards one and two.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Are there any other comments from any of the board members? I will weigh in. I do intend to support the motion and have struggled with standards one and two, concurring with the findings of the other board members regarding the other standards, but I'm weighing several factors, the first of which, I do feel it's a de minimis request, and appreciate Ms. Williams' comment regarding, they aren't here pleading for forgiveness, but coming to us beforehand. I also look at who would even notice that this variance was in place. I note that the setbacks that they proposed are nine-foot setbacks from the side yard, where five foot's the minimum, so they're exceeding those setbacks. The front yard setback, 25 feet, and the rear yard setback is 28 feet or so, so there, I think from the street, you wouldn't notice, from the adjacent lot, you wouldn't notice, from the rear building, you wouldn't notice that there's an exceedance of the lot coverage. That combined with the architectural design of the building, and the fact that, as the petitioner has indicated, there's a significant amount of area that's used for the covered All those weigh in. As well, with regard to standard one, and I realize this is a little bit difficult to get there, but they could have, the petitioner could have come forward with a two-story structure with a smaller footprint that meets it, but they're proposing what I would consider a very reasonable, minimally sized 1,700 square foot ranch-style house. And I do concur with the applicant's statements regarding the ADA requirements, the need for larger, wider hallways, wider, larger building, or larger bedrooms, I'm sorry. So, I think that that makes me tend to support findings that standard one and two are met for the reasons of the yard setbacks and the proposed footprint of the building that's submitted, and that we will be, if this variance is approved, will be subject to the site plan shown. So, for those reasons, I intend to support the motion. Are there any other comments? Mr. Fink?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also will be supporting the motion, though I have the same difficulties a number of board members have with standards one and two. I don't have problems with three and seven. I mean, I think the ADA clearly imposes some requirements that have to be met, and the individuals, the challenged individuals living there have a right to be in any neighborhood the rest of us have a right to be in, and they require some special construction, special needs, and then the ADA standards require that. You know, the contortions to get through one and two, it's difficult, and this is where I find it difficult to apply this code. For me, I think it's a de minimis, it's a de minimis variance at less than 2%, and for the reasons you stated, I am going to support it. But I do think it's really difficult to get through one and two, but I think it's a de minimis variance, I'm going to support it.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Are there any other comments from any board members? That motion passes by a vote of seven to zero. Again, for the record, every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. That brings us to our next case, 2012-083. The petitioner, Robert and Tamara Sacerson, they've indicated they're here this evening. Could staff provide us with the sufficiency of notice, please?
There were 46 public hearing notices mailed out on June 19th. We received one back with comment.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Could you proceed with your presentation?
Thank you. This is a request to allow a three-story expansion to encroach 26.5 feet into a required front yard setback. Access to the property is via Panther Drive. The lot is zoned R6. The building site is fairly level, but the lot slopes steeply at the rear of the house. The slope is such that building on the slope is not feasible. The proposed addition is approximately a 20-foot by 20-foot, sorry, a 20-foot by 24-foot expansion added to the front of the existing house. The addition would encroach, as I said, 26 and a half feet into the 50-foot front yard setback, which is the subject of this variance request. The proposed expansion will be a three-story addition. Should the board decide to grant the variance, the addition to the residence would render it a part of the legal non-conforming structure status of the existing house. A previous owner was granted a variance to build a garage addition in the 50-foot yard setback in 1994, which increased the nonconformity of the principal structure. Finding number one, the standard is substantially met. There are physical circumstances on the lot that prevent the addition from being constructed in a conforming manner. The property is impacted by topographic constraints. The steeply sloping rear yard severely limits the development options on this property. Number two, the standard is substantially met. Special or extraordinary circumstances arise from the physical characteristics of the property that result in a hardship or limitation on the development of a property. Standard number three, the standard is substantially met. The constraints of the lot are not self-imposed, and no special conditions or circumstances result from the actions of the applicant. Number four, the standard is also substantially met. If approved, granting the variance will not affect the use of adjacent property. Given the heavily wooded site and varying topography surrounding the house, the addition should have no effect on neighboring properties. Number five, the standard is substantially met. Allowing the addition to the house will not change the character of the neighborhood. The area is comprised of residential large lot development, some of it undeveloped. Given the heavily wooded site and topography surrounding the house, the addition would, should safeguard the view of the addition from neighboring properties. Number six, this variance is substantially met. If approved, the variance would not affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people in the surrounding area. The subject lot and the surrounding lots are over one acre in size and are heavily wooded with varying topography. The addition will not likely be readily visible from surrounding lots or roads. Several lots in the area are undeveloped. Number seven, the standard is substantially met. The requested variance is the minimum variance required to allow the addition to be constructed and to make possible a reasonable use of the land. However, staff does recognize that a smaller addition could have been proposed by the petitioner to reduce the magnitude of the variance needed. We did get back one neighbor, one comment from a neighbor's. They said they do not oppose the encroachment, and stated that the addition can only be built within the front yard setback, and it would not be harmful to the neighborhood as the home is relatively hidden from the road. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Are there any questions of staff by the board? I just have one question, Ms. Ferguson. On page 36 of the packet, I just want to be, or I'm trying to get clarification, there's on the, this site plan, there's an arrow pointing to a proposed addition. Is that the 20 by 24 area, which would be, I guess, to the left of the driveway, as you're looking at the front of the house? Is that the area that we're also talking about with this variance?
Mr. Cars, yes. If you were to extend that arrow, it would touch that proposed addition.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of the staff? Seeing none, could the applicant come forward, please? Could you state and spell your name for the record?
Robert Sacerson, S-A-C-K-E-R-S-O-N.
Thank you, Mr. Sac, Mr. Sacerson, and you have 10 minutes for your presentation.
I'd first like to thank Ms. Ferguson for her comments, and I agree with all seven of them. Basically, we're just trying to build an addition for our house. My wife wants the addition, and I want to make her happy, so that's what I'm doing here tonight. And so, basically, all we're trying to do is put an addition in, and I can't remember if I added this into the packet, but this really illustrates how remote we are. Should I bring this up if it's not there?
No, that, I believe that shows on page 40 of our staff packet. That's the area, you may want to state what that is. That's the aerial photo, correct?
Yes, that's correct. So, that, this really kind of describes how remote we are, and really, it will have no impact on the neighborhood. The closest house is down below us, and it's basically 70 vertical feet below us, so they would not be able to see up to what we're doing. So, the, like Ms. Ferguson said, the ravine behind the house would be too steep to build on. The only buildable part of the land, the 1.5 acres that we have, is the front yard, so we'd be going out. The original house was built in 78, and that was built before there was zoning, and our kitchen actually is in the setback, so we didn't know that when we bought the house, because that's just not what I do for a living, so it's not something I was familiar with. But now I am very familiar with it, so any place where we're going to build would have to be in that 50-foot setback. So, the, I think the closest point of the setback is going to be the entryway, and that's it. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Sacerson. Are there any questions of the petitioner by the board? Anyone at all? Any questions? Does staff have any questions of the petitioner? No, thank you.
I'm sorry, I do have one thing. I was going through the comments, and in the comments, it was an onsite water and wastewater and increase in number of bedrooms may require the septic system to be upgraded. The top floor is meant to be just a, it won't be a bedroom, it's going to be kind of like a viewing area. But we did have the idea that when family came, we'd probably have a pull-out couch or something that we could use, but there won't be any closets up there, so it wouldn't actually be a proper bedroom. Also, everything isn't completely figured out yet, but we have a son who has a slight case of asthma, and right now, his bedroom is in the basement, so we thought he might sleep in there sometimes, too, but again, it wouldn't be a bedroom, so I don't think that would be, I'm not sure, would that be a requirement?
Well, and there's a, if this variance were to be granted, there's a condition, number two, that through your building permit process, I believe you'd need to resolve that with onsite water wastewater, if it's considered a bedroom or not, and that would need to be taken care of through that process.
Okay.
Ms. Ferguson, is that your understanding of the process as well?
Yes, the owner would have to go and speak to onsite water and wastewater, and they would most likely ask questions about your septic system, and then probably send an inspector out. But if your current system, if they deem it, you know, adequate, and they also deemed it as a bedroom, that would, that would be a decision that they would have to make.
Thank you. Yes, so we're just acting on the variance regarding the setback before us. Mr. Vig, you have a question, comment?
I have a question. Mr. Sacerson, I thought it said in the packet the square footage of your existing structure, and maybe what the proposed addition square footage is, but I can't find it now. Could you speak to that?
The current square footage of the house is about 2,200 square feet, a little bit more than that, in between 2,200 and 2,300 square feet. That includes the basement, and the basement is not really, as my wife put it, I could live in a shed, as long as I live up there, I'd be happy, but she needs the flow of the house, and I'm starting to understand what she's saying, but, you know, so part of what we're looking for is the, she really wants to have a much bigger area for people to come in, so that's part of why we'd want the extra footage. Actually, the one thing that I did want was the top floor. That's not something that she wanted, but, you know, we have an amazing view of the mountains, and, you know, if we're going to build this, we might as well just, you know, go up one more story, and we're going to make a smaller room on the top, just so we could see the mountains, and then that would be an entertaining area. So, that's, that helps.
Okay, and the size of the addition is about how, how large?
It's going to be, it'll be close to 1,500 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Sac. Thank you. You can have a seat. I'm guessing we're going to have a brief public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
I don't have anything else.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Mr. Sacerson, there was no public testimony. Did you have anything to rebut? He's indicated no. With that, the matter rests with the board. Could I have a positive motion from a board member, please? Mr. Fink, thank you. Do you care to state your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In case number 2012-083, I move we approve a variance in the R6 district to allow a new addition onto a legal non-conforming principal structure, which will encroach into the required 50-foot front yard setback, and which will increase the non- the nonconformity of the principal structure. And I would move, as part of that, that we add conditions one through three on page six of the packet until the approval.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Ms. Williams, you've indicated you would second?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Fink, would you speak to your motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I intend to support the motion. This case, for me, is a little more straightforward and easier than some of the other ones we looked at. I concur with staff's recommendation, so rather than just reading through them, they find all seven -- all seven standards are substantially met, and I would just adopt them and indicate I intend not supporting the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Ms. Williams?
Yes, thank you. I also intend to support this motion, and I can just walk through the findings real quickly. I think standard one, I agree on the -- because of the steep slope on the property. Standard two, I agree. There is -- it doesn't appear at all that there's any other place on the property to build except for in the setbacks. Standard three, I also agree that that has been met. It doesn't appear that the encroachment was disclosed when the property was purchased, and petitioner certainly didn't cause the steep slope or the topography of the property. Standard four, I believe that has been substantially -- or agree that has been substantially met as well, due to the ruralness of the area, as the petitioner pointed out. Standard five, I also agree that that standard has been substantially met, as this is a dimension and not a use variance. Standard six, I agree that that has been met. There have been no concerns identified by the municipal departments except for the onsite water, and that issue will be resolved through the building permitting process. And standard five, I have a little bit of a struggle with that, but given the size of the current property and the proposed addition, I don't think that that's out of bounds for reasonableness. So for those reasons, I also intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I also intend to support the motion, concurring with the findings of Mr. Fink and Ms. Williams. And with respect to standard five and I suppose standard seven, I note that, again, the location of the addition, as shown on the site plan on lot thirty-six, is actually, if I can explain myself, it's as far away from the front yard setback, I think, as practical, yet it's still within the setback. So my point is, there's other parts of the house that encroach more into the setback. So as far as this being the minimum variance, I do feel that that's met with respect to the size of the lot and the surrounding neighborhood. So I do intend to support the motion. Are there other comments, board members? Mr. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not to blabber the issue, I do intend to support the motion, but I have a question perhaps we can resolve amongst the board. I need some clarification or would benefit from some clarification about what it is exactly were -- if we in fact approve the motion, what it is we're approving. Is it in fact the twenty by twenty-four addition as shown on page thirty-six of the staff packet? Or is it just an addition that encroaches into that fifty-foot front yard setback with no dimensions certain, per se?
The motion before us is to -- oh, that is a good question, because I had assumed there is a -- it's not specific to a site plan that's been provided. Perhaps we could get -- we could pause at this time for a question to staff.
Sure, and I asked the question because of the petitioner's comment about the square footage of the addition, which was quite a bit larger than twenty by twenty-four unless I'm missing something. I believe I heard fifteen hundred or sixteen hundred square feet.
Okay. I -- it's interesting, my impression was it was the stories that were going to increase the -- it was three stor -- over three stories?
Oh, three stories. Okay, then, all right, that settles it. I thought it was just two stories, but...
How about if we pause this and get a clarification? I'd rather not be the one on the hook for that. Procedurally, are we okay to -- comfortable asking that? Yeah, could you please -- could the petitioner please come forward? And I think there's either one or both of us are maybe a misinterpretation, or could you clarify perhaps the location of the addition that you're proposing and...
The first two stories are twenty by twenty-four, and the catwalk or the top story would be sixteen by twenty. I've got -- do you want to look at that?
If you bring that forward, we will have to keep it and as part of the record for thirty days.
Okay. So is that good enough then?
The oral testimony answers the question.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Ron, was your question asked and answered, and do you have any further comments?
It was, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions or comments? If not, please vote. That motion passes by a vote of seven to zero. For the record, every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have thirty days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. We have two more cases this evening. How is everyone? Two? Did I miss -- we still have two more cases before us this evening? Okay. Yeah, so could we -- how about if we take a three minute -- excuse me, say, swallow the microphone. Yes, Mr. Ron?
Confused again. Was the last case postponed?
Yes, however, I believe that we have, according to my agenda, we have two thousand twelve zero eight two and two thousand twelve zero eight one on our agenda.
Looks like I need a break then.
Okay. Let's try and take a three-minute break, so we can get back as soon as possible. We are back on the record, and we have before us case two thousand twelve zero eight two. The applicant, Benjamin Schneider, is the applicant here this evening. He's indicated he's present. Could staff provide us with the sufficiency of notice, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. On June nineteenth, two thousand twelve fifty-seven, public hearing notices were mailed to surrounding property owners within a thousand feet of the property, and no comments have been received regarding the variance request, and no comment has been received from the Chugiak Community Council.
Thank you, Ms. Iverson. Could you proceed with your presentation?
This is a request for a variance in the R six district to allow a yurt to encroach six point five feet into the required fifty-foot front yard setback. The petitioner desires to construct a thirty-foot diameter yurt that will be fifteen feet tall. The petition site is one point eight seven acres. There's currently a two-story, single-family home on the site. The site does slope very steeply, dropping almost a hundred and twenty-five feet in elevation down to Peters Creek, and there is a fifty-foot creek maintenance easement along Peters Creek. However, there is a flat area to the north of the house and some behind the house where the site is relatively level. In nineteen ninety-one, a previous owner was granted a variance to permit a thirty-foot encroachment into the required front yard setback in order to construct the two-car garage that currently exists on the site. Regarding the findings, staff found that the first standard was met. The developable area of the site is significantly reduced, given the steep slope and the fifty-foot creek maintenance easement. Staff found that standard number two was not substantially met. The site does afford enough developable land to provide the amenities common for a single-family house, including a garage, deck, and storage. And while the level -- while a level lot would be more -- have more developable area, the reduced amount of developable space would have been reflected in the price of the land. Standard number three is substantially a met. The environmental conditions of steep slope and the creek easement is not a result of the action of the applicant. Standard number four is substantially a met. The variance would not impact the use of the adjacent properties as single-family residents. Standard number five, staff did not find was substantially a met. While the request is dimensional and would not allow a use that is prohibited in the R six district, this standard also speaks to the character of the zoning district, and the intent of the R six zoning district is to encourage low-density residential development and protect and enhance those physical and environmental features which add to the desirability of suburban residential living. A key element in creating that suburban residential character in the R six district is the fifty-foot front yard setback, and the adjacent properties are heavily wooded and structures appear to be set back from the property line in accordance with the fifty-foot setback. The petition site has already encroached into the front yard setback with the two-car garage. Staff found that standard number six was met. There would be no area-wide impacts, and there were no identified health or safety issues. And standard number seven, staff found, was not met. The purpose of the yurt is to provide a shed and workspace, and a smaller shed could be constructed within the yard setbacks, either in the proposed location or behind the house where the lot is level. Because standards two, five, and seven are not substantially met, the staff recommends denial. However, if the board finds that all the standards are met, the department recommends approval be subject to the two conditions listed on page six of the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Iverson. Are there any questions of the staff by the board? Any questions? Mr. Vig?
Thank you, through the chair. Ms. Iverson, are the -- or do you know the neighborhood typical home size? I know that there's some mention in page four of the packet about typically, the two neighboring lots have sheds of certain sizes, but do you have a sense of the typical home size in that neighborhood?
Through the chair, Commissioner Vig, I don't off the top of my head. I just kind of compared the sheds.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, could the petitioner come forward, please? And would you please state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Benjamin Schneider, S-E-H-N-E-I-D-E-R.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. You have ten minutes for your presentation, and so there -- could you, at a minimum, address the seven standards within your ten minutes? Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to start out by answering the question that was up for the debate earlier by Mr. Vig. The property to the west of our house is twenty-eight hundred square feet. The property to the north is nineteen hundred square feet, and ours -- or I'm sorry, to the north is about eighteen hundred square feet. And ours is about nineteen hundred square feet. My name is Ben Schneider, and I am applying for variance in my front yard setback. I own a thirty-foot diameter yurt that my family lived in as a primary residence for four years. We recently bought a house in Chugiak with the hope of setting up the yurt on the surrounding property and having it be part of our daily lives. Being a first-time homebuyer, I had never heard of setbacks, and that's why I'm here today. Variance is being crested on the grounds, and the topography of our property severely limits the buildable space. There is a steep slope dropping one hundred feet from our house down to Peters Creek, and R six zoning requires a fifty-foot setback. This leaves only a small portion of the one point eight acre lot suitable for building. In my statement, I'd like to focus on the standards for variance that the planning staff deemed unmet. Those are standards two, five, and seven. Concerning standard two, it was stated on the staff analysis that it is not commonly enjoyed right to have a seven hundred square foot workshop and storage space in addition to other accessory buildings in R six zoning. However, due to the topography of other two-acre properties in the area, if they chose to make a structure of this size, they would have the space to do so. It was also stated that the reduced amount of developable space on our property would have been reflected in the price of the land. Looking at recent tax info, I have found this not to be true. To the north of us is a two point four or five acre property whose land value in two thousand eleven was assessed at one hundred thousand, one hundred thousand, two hundred dollars, or forty thousand, nine hundred dollars an acre. To the west and across the street from us is a one point seven acre property whose land value in two thousand eleven was assessed at ninety-four thousand dollars, or fifty-five thousand, three hundred dollars an acre. These are the only other properties on Hard Rock Drive besides us. Neither of these properties has the amount of reduced building space due to topography that our property does. Our property has not yet had a yearly tax assessment based on its new purchase price, but using the ratio of land to total property value assessed in two thousand eleven compared to its purchase price in January, I found the land value to be approximately ninety-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. The property has one point eight three acres, which makes it fifty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars an acre. Sorry for all the numbers. Based solely on the two thousand eleven tax information, the land was valued at eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred, and would have been forty-eight thousand, five hundred per acre. Both calculations make it much more expensive than the property to the north and only slightly cheaper than the land than the property to the west. Please feel free to check my math and show me where I might have gone astray. Obviously, my math and knowledge of property value assessment are nowhere near perfect, but I believe my numbers are adequate to demonstrate my point. The reduced buildable space of my property is not reflected in the price of the land. We have also made efforts to conform to the other properties' accessory buildings by removing our greenhouse and are prepared to do the same with our shed. I'd also like to point out that the proposed yurt will not be built with a permanent foundation. Concerning standard five, it was stated that the granting of this variance will change the character of the zoning district by not maintaining low-density housing. I do not believe this to be true. The other properties on Hard Rock Drive have temporary structures in view of the road and have been able to place them behind their setbacks only because of the amount of buildable space on their land. The yurt is a temporary structure that can be put up and taken down in a day. It will not be placed much closer to the front yard of our property than the temporary structures on neighboring properties. These other properties have their structures more hidden behind trees than we do, but this will resolve itself in time, as we have a line of spruce trees planted and growing at the front of the property between the proposed yurt and the road. While the property did have a front setback variance granted for the building of a garage in nineteen ninety-one, there was no other way for this garage to be built. The side of the property of the garage is more wooded and heads the structure. The proposed yurt will encroach into the front yard setback far less than the garage has. If need be, we are willing to take down the shed on the south side of the property to more confirm to R six zoning's goal of low-density housing. Concerning standard seven, while a smaller workshop space would fit in the setbacks of the property, the yurt we own does not. In asking for variance, we made sure that only one setback line would be encroached upon. The proposed placement is as close to the drop-off and as close to the house as we thought safety would warrant. This places the yurt inside the front stack, such the front setback as little as possible. I believe we are asking for the minimum variance needed for our use of the land. Thank you for considering my case and the opportunity to present it.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Are there questions of the applicant by the board? I do have a question, Mr. Schneider. Let me get my page numbering right. I believe you answered my first question on why this size of the yurt -- do they make other sizes? But it sounds like you own a yurt this size of the...
We own it, and it's currently inside of our garage.
Okay. Second question on your applicant -- in your application and on our staff packet, which are our pages forty-one... and 43, I believe. Do you have a copy of the packet?
I do.
Those are, I'm assuming those are your two sketches showing, one, how the yurt, if, with the variance and without the variance, and to meet the setback or to construct the yurt and not need a variance, you're right up against the top of that slope, and you'd made the comment. So I guess the question is, what are your options if this variance weren't granted? And what is shown here is to move it, but it's right up against that toe.
I believe there's a code about accessory structures being within a certain distance of the primary structure, and I took that to also include the deck, and I believe that the five feet is too close to the deck to adhere to that code. Again, I believe I read that somewhere, but I don't have the code to cite right off. If this variance is not granted, we will sell the 30-foot yurt and probably buy a smaller diameter with the money that we get from that.
And where I was going was, again, you answered my question on why the yurt. You could build something maybe more rectangular to get the same square footage, you know, than the yurt. But you don't have a specific use in mind for the workshop shed that necessitates the side?
The proposed use of the yurt is for a workshop. I do a lot of woodworking, and so to have some dedicated space away from our garage for me to be able to perform that, and then also some storage space as well, just because I don't think I can fill an entire 30-foot yurt with workshop materials.
And my last question then, and you indicated that it's a temporary structure, but is there, there's a deck that's constructed, I'm assuming, based on the picture?
So the most typical construction of yurt is to use pier blocks. This particular design would require 30 pier blocks to be set down on a gravel pad, but no digging down into the earth or pouring of concrete would be needed. The only thing that might be permitted is if we put electrical line, having to dig a ditch to get the electricity out to the structure.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions of the applicant by the board? Mr. Ron?
Thank you through the chair. Mr. Schneider, what's the status of the property to your north, further up Hard Rock Drive?
Directly to the north, there is a property that only has about 10 feet between the road and the drop-off. It is currently owned, but probably unbuildable.
And maybe just a clarification, and that's the last, the northerlymost lot on that cul-de-sac?
No, I took that to mean the property directly to the north of our property.
You share a common lot line to the north and the west?
Yes, that's the one I described.
So on page 10 of the staff packet, it's coded as vacant, just to the north there.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
May I say something about the property to the south? Is that okay to ask or should I wait?
Mr. Ron asks you what the condition of the property to the south is. You could...
Mr. Schneider, could you please tell the board about the condition of the property to the south?
The property to the south is currently wooded. There is a house on the property to the south, but it is further to the east, and that wooded area is currently undeveloped.
Mr. Vig.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider, I think you said that you've already removed the greenhouse, and if the variance were granted, you would remove the other shed.
If it was, sorry, continue.
Do I have it backwards or?
No, you have it right. The greenhouse has been removed, and if need be to have the variance granted, I would be willing to move the shed because that is a lot of storage space, and I don't need that much.
And following up on that, if the variance were to be granted, would you be amenable to that removal of that shed being a third condition to that?
Yes, I would. And for clarification on the as-built, the greenhouse is the property to the north, which would have to be removed anyway for the yurt to be completed, and the shed is the one to the south, right next to the well.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further questions? Does staff have any questions of the applicant?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schneider. With that, we'll open it up for our public testimony. Could you have a seat, please? Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing and hearing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
I don't. I just want to comment on the shed, that that shed was approved in the previous variance on page 54 of the staff packet, because I kind of had a question about that shed, too, but I felt comfortable with it since it was shown on the previous variance site plan. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you very much, Ms. Iverson. With that, does the applicant have any further rebuttal? Any rebuttal, I should say?
I guess I have a little confusion just in the fact that if that is part of the variance, does that affect the R six zoning's compliance with low-density housing? Does that sort of group the garage and the shed together? And does that, if the granting of the variance would, I'm sorry, what I was trying to say is, would the shed removal, would that affect anything, I guess, in terms of complying with low-density housing? I'm not being...
Would you like to address that?
I just meant in my comments that I was fine with the shed being there from the staff's point of view.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about my inarticulation on that point.
Thank you. With that, the matter rests with the board. Mr. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In case number 2012-082, I moved to grant a variance in the R six district from AMC 21.40.080G.1 to allow a yurt to encroach 6.5 feet into the required 50-foot front yard setback in consideration of, or with the inclusion of, Department of Recommendations numbers one and two on page six of the staff packet, as well as an additional condition that the petitioner remove the accessory structure shown to the south of the house on the current plot plan or as-built on page two of the staff packet.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Mr. Vig, you indicated you'd second the motion.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Mr. Ron, would you speak to your motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I concur with staff that standard one is substantially met. I disagree with staff and find that standard two is at least partially met, if not substantially met. I appreciate the petitioner's diligence in walking us through both land values and the physical characteristics of the land that affect potential placement of the yurt, regardless of its size, on the property. I do find that standard two is at least partially met, if not substantially met. I agree with staff on standards three and four. I disagree with staff in standard five and find that it is at least partially met. Yes, in fact, as we've heard, the petition site has already encroached into the front yard setback as approved by this board under a previous variance. The reason for the granting of that variance was the same reason that we're reviewing this variance, in that the only buildable spot is to the front part of this property. I therefore find standard five is met for the fact that, based on the size of lots, the lack of buildable, potential buildability of the property to the north, that if we do grant this variance, it won't disagree with the intent of the code. I agree with staff that standard six is met. And regarding standard seven, I find that it is at least partially met. As we've heard, a smaller shed or yurt could be constructed, but given the circumstances, I find that what's being proposed is in keeping with at least partially a minimum variance to make possible use, a reasonable use, of what appears to be a very constricted lot. For those reasons, I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Mr. Vig?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Mr. Ron and staff on standard number one being substantially met. And the developable area of the lot is extremely limited. I think the applicant answered my questions about standard number two in that it apparently would create a hardship by restricting the ability to enjoy similar rights enjoyed by other properties and that there were no discounts on the property value for the condition of the slopes and so on. So I believe that that is substantially met. Standard number three, I agree with staff that it is substantially met, as well as number four. And number five, I think Mr. Ron did a good, had a good explanation for his reasoning, believing it to be at least partially, if not substantially, met in that it, while the intent of the R six district is to encourage a low-density residential, I think that will remain the same with the variance being granted. And standard number six, I believe, is substantially met. It will not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality. Standard number seven, I believe, is substantially met from the standpoint of, the petitioner's indicated a willingness to go along with a third condition requiring the removal of an existing shed which sits within the front yard setback, and I think that trade-off makes it a minimum variance that provides a reasonable use of the land, and so I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Are there any other comments from any board members? You waiting on me? The suspense is killing us. It is unanimous, a vote of seven in favor and no votes, so that motion passes by a vote of seven to zero. Again, for the record, every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. That brings us to our final case this evening, 2012-081. The petitioner, Ruston Kraft, he's indicated he's here. And Mr. McLaughlin, I'm assuming this is your case? Could you provide us with the sufficiency of notice, please?
On June 19th, '78, public hearing notices were mailed. No comments were received from the public or from the community council.
Thank you. Could you provide us with your presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is a late comment that's, or sorry, a piece of paper that was laid on the table for this case. It's a topography map. It's an aerial photo with a superimposed topography, four-foot contour lines. And so if you look closely, and it's hard to tell, but the red line, the contour line on the back of the neighbor's lot is at elevation 452, and then the red contour line, four-foot contour line in the front of the petitioner's lot is 456, mean sea level. This was also emailed to you as well. Pages six and seven show an as-built of the property and the proposed site plan. The petitioner requests a variance from the minimum yard requirements to allow a garage to encroach nine feet, 90 percent, into the 10-foot rear yard setback in the R1 district. The petitioner would like to build a 660-foot, a square foot, attached two-car garage behind his house. The house currently does not have a garage. Standard number one does not appear to be met. There are no exceptional physical circumstances of the land. There are no streams, wetlands, or slopes. The lot is irregularly shaped. It was platted in 2005. The lot contains a little over 10,000 square feet, which is 1,714 square feet larger than the minimum required in the R1A district. Standard number two does not appear to be met. There are no physical circumstances of the land which prevent the owner from having a garage. The petitioner has sufficient space in the front yard to build a garage and meet the required 20-foot front yard setback. Standard number three does not appear to be met. There are no peculiarities of the lot. The lot is oddly shaped, but that does not relate to the need for the variance. The need for the variance is the result of the petitioner's desire to have a two-car garage in a convenient location in the rear of the home. Standard number four does not appear to be met. The granting of the variance could adversely affect the use of the adjacent property to the west. If the variance is granted, then the neighbor to the west would not be able to build any structure within 10 feet of the proposed garage, and the required yard setback for that neighbor is five feet from their lot line. The petitioner stated that there is an existing structure located on the neighbor's property, which is approximately 14 feet from the property line. You can see this, although not very well, on page 10 of your packet. There's an aerial photo showing the lot line, and it shows the garage of the neighbor, if you look really closely in that shaded sort of dark area, and then the petitioner's home, and he intends to build that garage on the rear of his home. Standard number five is met. Six is also met. Seven does not appear to be met. A two-car garage can be built elsewhere on the property without encroaching into the yard setback. The proposed garage is a modest size, is a rather small two-car garage. However, the encroachment is significant. Standards one, two, three, four, and seven do not appear to be substantially met for the garage. Therefore, the department recommends denial. If after a public hearing, the board finds that all seven standards are substantially met, then the approval should be subject to conditions one through three on page five. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Are there any questions of staff at the board? One question on page 10 of the staff packet, the adjacent lot. Are there two structures on that lot, Lot 14A 2-1A? Is that...
That's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, could the petitioner come forward, please? Could you state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Ruston Kraft, K-R-A-F-F-T.
Thank you, Mr. Kraft. You have 10 minutes for your presentation.
I have some additional information that I'd like to hand... I have some additional information that I'd like to hand out. Some of it is the topo map, but then there's also some other photos inside here.
Okay. And we will need to log them in for the record. Thank you, Mr. Kraft.
All right. I'm here tonight to submit additional information on my requested variance. In April of 2011, I looked into purchasing this property, and on April 12th, made a phone call to L. Barrett with the municipality's planning division. I went over the request of Mr. Barrett, and although I knew I needed the approval of this body, on his advice regarding the reasonableness of my request, I decided to move forward and purchase the property. On May 3rd of this year, I sent the application into Mr. Barrett to review, and a reply came back from him, "It looks good to me." He then passed the case off to Karen Iverson. I dropped my paperwork off of Ms. Iverson, and at that time, actually purchased that topo map from the muni, which you just recently received. My application, apparently, was then passed on to Mr. McLaughlin, and I appreciate the work that he's done on this case. The report issued by Planning Division is understandable if you take into account that they did not seek any answers to the questions that they've chosen to bring forward and that the topo map failed to make it into the packet. I had only two conversations with Mr. McLaughlin prior to the completion of the report. One was to go over some minor questions he had regarding the location of the adjacent structure, and one was discussing the placement of the public hearing sign. During those conversations, the only concern brought forward was that of the potential impact on the adjoining property and the property owner to the rear of my parcel. A drive down the street would first give everybody an impression of the feeling of this neighborhood. It's easy to show how the placement of a garage in front of the house would either fit, would neither fit the neighborhood nor fit the existing structure. Additionally, a garage addition in the front of the parcel would require removal of substantial number of trees and installation of an additional driveway along the important, or along with the import of a substantial amount of fill. I mentioned this during my meeting with Karen Iverson, hence the requested map. However, again, the map failed to be produced and included in the packet. Addressing the specific standards, to standard one, there is exceptional and extraordinary physical circumstances. What's difficult to see on that map and what didn't get brought forward is, along the front edge of this parcel is a major drainage area. There's a four-foot grade separation between the road and the property, the existing elevation in the front of it. Filling this area would impact the drainage on the property and potentially result in flooding of not only my parcel, but the adjacent parcels. My neighbor to the north already has to place hundreds of pounds of road salt in the upstream side of his own driveway culvert each winter to prevent spring flooding. Several parcels in the area, as well as runoff from the road passes in front of my property to a dry well storm drain which is on the south side of my driveway. Stormwater runoff, spring meltwater from two adjacent parcels as where, as well as from Baronoff Avenue travels through my property. Under normal circumstances, the current drainage system should be accurate. However, during heavy snow years or periods of rapid melt, it's a ten, it is tenuous to say the least. Disturbance of this drainage will only invite problems. In addition, installation of another driveway would create a situation where there would be three driveways in a distance of 125 feet and four within a distance of 190 feet, all along the same parcel, or the same side of the road. Not to mention that they are located on a hill with reduced visibility, increasing traffic, and all within two blocks of the school. Beyond the issue of physical circumstances that make development a challenge, there's a common sense that would say you don't construct a garage in front of a home that has existing windows that are 12 feet tall. Item two, strict adherence to the code would prevent me from constructing what the planner himself acknowledges to be a very modest garage. Referring back to question one, the replacement, or the placement of a garage in the front is a poor recommendation made without consideration of the impact on the drainage. The existing home, if a garage is to be built on the property, the only reasonable location is in the rear. Denial of the variance and holding firm to the code prevents me from being able to construct. Item three, I did purchase the parcel last year. I was not, although I was not the one who decided where to build the original home or draw the new lot lines. Those two items were beyond my control. The parcel that wraps around mine and is, and is immediately to the rear used to be one-piece. That, the, my parcel was subdivided off of it in order to close the sale. The previous owner of the, of the master parcel, along with the owner of the rear parcel, is here tonight. He may be able to shed some light on it if there's any other questions. The peculiarity of the lot in terms of drainage have been addressed in the two previous points. The desire is not simply because it's the most logical place to put a garage, but it has the least impact on the natural drainage. The only way to construct a reasonable garage in the front were for it to be an attached garage. However, this would involve removing the view and the windows from my home. This home is a chalet design with vaulted ceilings and ground-to-ceiling windows. The home sits approximately 54 feet back from a heavily wooded front property line with a 20-foot setback. This leaves approximately 34 feet to build on. If it is detached, remove another 10 feet for air circulation and fire safety, leaving a minimum of 24 feet. A 24-by-24-foot garage is at the most that you could put in the front yard in front of this, but even with that, you'd still have to construct a driveway across a major drainage area and impact approximately 1,000 square feet of, of land to do it. Figure, or item number four, the figures included in the report are incorrect. As shown in the pictures, the adjacent landowner's structure is located 20 feet, 7 inches to the west of my property line. The area is paved and connected to a shared driveway. The adjacent owner, landowner, Mr. Vern Muller, is aware of the impact and has voiced his support of the variance. Any future landowners would have the responsibility of due diligence in buying the parcels and should not be a part of the decision here tonight. Item number seven, the answer supplied by the planner is his opinion and not based on fact. While acknowledging that the garage is a modest garage at 660 square feet, he states that 250 square feet of variance is significant. He then states that it would, it could be built on another area while again ignoring the aesthetics and the drainage issues. The report stresses the percentage of variance but has failed to accurately represent what is truly being asked for. As currently designed, the structure would sit approximately nine feet into a 10-foot setback at its nearest point. However, as depicted in the drawings, the rear property line does not run parallel to the structure, but in fact fades away. The variance at the far end of the building would only be a six-foot variance, so it's an angle, the property line angles through. It translates into approximately 250 square feet of total variance that I'm asking for. The property itself has between 2600 and 2700 square feet of land that are covered by variances due to the side, front, and rear setbacks. I'm asking for a 10 to 15 percent amount to be allowed for constructing this garage. In the end, what I'm asking for is a modest garage, 660 square feet. It's the minimum width for a two-stall garage. Placement of the garage in the rear would only require me to disturb an additional 200 square feet of lawn. The rest of the area is already paved, attached to the adjoining driveway. The effect on the adjacent landowner is, is understood. We're both well aware of the effect that it has on him in terms of being built up to the property line. It may not be appropriate to say it, but the adjacent landowner has basically given me full rights to access in that area. I currently have snow machines stored in there. I mean, the, to my knowledge, he has no intent of ever trying to develop into that, that five-foot or even 10-foot setback from his property line. So I don't, I guess I don't know what else to bring forward at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Kraft. Are there any com, or any questions from any of the board members? I guess I have two, two questions, Mr. Kraft. With your proposal, with the garage within one foot of the property line on the, on the west side, how would you have, propose to have maintenance? Have you ever had to paint it or do anything on the west side or on the rear? I mean, legally, you have no right, you have got to be pretty skinny to walk with, on a foot of your own property.
I, I would agree. I would hope that just the fact that the neighbor and I share a driveway where in fact the property line runs right down the center, we have to work cooperatively to allow access to, to the rear parcel. Our, our, the driveway accessing the parcel behind me is wedged between my property and a 15-foot drainage easement that the municipality holds. So the only access to that rear parcel is basically through my property. I bought the property knowing that there was shared access. Anybody that in the future were to buy Mr. Muller's property in the back is going to understand that there's shared access in there. I would hope that just a neighborly relationship would allow at least enough understanding that I could stand and possibly trespass within one foot of his property line just to simply paint the wall of a garage.
And the second question, you're showing the, page seven of the packet shows a well which appears that it would only be two to three feet off the corner of the garage. Is the intention to have that well continue to remain in place?
That, that well is, and yeah, it sits a little bit further than that. It's five to six feet off the back corner. That stake that's in there, I don't believe is accurate. We were just eyeballing it up at that point. The depiction on the drawings that were placed in there is a little bit closer to where that well actually sits. We've measured it out, and there is easy access in from that side. There's also access in, if need be, from an adjoining property off of the driveway. There's a fence that just separates the driveway from that parcel.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, the applicant? Does staff have any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry?
We don't have the option to press our button to get your attention, so I'll just...
Okay.
While Jill gets me. There we go.
I still don't show you. You don't exist on my computer.
Probably better that way.
Well, there we go. Mr. Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kraft, I appreciate the additional documentation you provided to the board and would like to give you an opportunity to speak to some of those photos. For the record, I do drive Meadow Creek on a daily basis. I live in the neighborhood, and the photos that you presented are just a small representation of the stark difference in aesthetic value between those street-facing garages on Meadow Creek and the aesthetic value of, of Chain of Rock. So if you could, starting with the chalk line drawings, maybe...
Sure.
...work the board through what you're showing us there.
This photo is taken from on my roof, looking down into the area behind the home. The curved pink line that wraps around the structure behind it, that is a, I just wanted to put that line in there to show the minimum fire separation that's required by code. Working off of the corner of that, that structure, that creates the arc, and then of course the line running across what appears to be a garage door. I can let the, the owner talk to it. That's, that's not a garage door. There's actually a structure behind that. Represents just the 10 feet that code would require for building separation. So there's a second line coming down that's 10 foot, 7 feet past that. That is the actual property line that exists separating my parcel from the parcel to the rear. The smaller 90-degree angle that's, that, that lines up with the shadow at the bottom, that is the footprint of where the garage would be constructed. The second photo is just a, is a close-up photo of that same area. You have to remember that all of this is behind a structure and out of view of the street. There, you cannot see this area from out front at all. The only, there's only two people that can see it, the adjacent landowners on either The third photo, again, just of that area back in there. It's a little cluttered right now. At the end, you'll see a, a photo of the front of the house with scaffolding. Under the gray tarp and tarp there are all new windows that we're putting in the house. The first photo, it's, I don't know, the easiest way to show this, I guess. This is a, a photo taken from the, the front deck of my house, looking out into the corner, which is the only place that you could physically squeeze in any other structure in my front yard. This is actually looking at the, oh, it would be the northeast corner, the northeast corner of the property. The road sits four feet above this elevation. This area right here is what works to absorb all of that additional rain or stormwater that's coming off in the springtime with the melt. The, the drainage ditch runs parallel to the front of the house, but this area right here, these soils are very absorbent, and they're holding all of that runoff coming from the neighbor. And then up in that, that Baronoff Chain of Rock area, everything comes down Chain of Rock and ends up in my property, heading for a dry well, which is on the south side of the property. The next photo didn't turn out to show exactly what I wanted. I was hoping to show not only that along that northern property line is there an MEA service pole which would be impacted, but also you can see a van in the background. Well, between where I'm standing and that van, there's two driveways. And this shows that congestion up in that area. There's a lot of traffic. Unfortunately, we get a lot of traffic coming out of the development that's to the north of us, and it, and I can sit there on any night and just watch the vehicles speed up as fast as they can to see how quick they can get down to Chain of Rock. We have little kids at the house, ranging from six months, two, three-year-olds, about, we have a lot, a lot of kids over there. And I can't, although I would love to let them cross the street to go play with the neighbors and, and be able to ride around out there, the traffic going through there, unfortunately, is, we just get a lot of high-speed speeders traveling through that area. One of the benefits of this house, when we looked at it, was it had that large shared driveway in that developed area in the back, so the kids have access to ride bikes. They can, they draw all over the, the concrete, they do everything, and I can keep them out of the street. The next photo is simply a picture of Chain of Rock. This is taken from, directly across the street from my house, looking south towards Highland Mountain. As you can see, you don't see any development out here. All of the homes, these are originally very large lots. Several of them have been divided, but all of the homes sit fairly far back from the road. That's why, I mean, one of the recommendations was to go ahead and build, you know, in the front. I would, I wouldn't literally have to build within 20 feet of the road and take all of the trees out on my property, and it would be easily visible from the road. Looking to, or the, the next picture is of that grade separation area again. This is where all this water is coming down, and it's dumping into this ditch onto my property and following right along it to the other side of my driveway, again, into a municipal and dry well over there. There's already two col, or one large culvert that services two driveways up there, plus the culvert that services my driveway. I just, I fear putting another culvert in there is just inviting backup in the spring when everything starts to melt. The next two photos are of two of the homes that are two blocks away over on Meadow Creek Drive. Meadow Creek Drive is built a lot more dense than what we are, but there are about four or five of these garages over there that were built in front of the homes. They're built so tight that you can't, you couldn't build, or you couldn't put a garage next to any of the homes over there. I mean, they're, they're narrower lots, so people have elected to do just what staff is recommending and build a garage in front of their home. The problem is, not only are... The problem is, not only are we seeing garages when we drive down there, I mean, that's the view you get, but also you have such a limited parking area within the queuing area going into that garage that, you know, you have a garage, a vehicle, and a road. I mean, it just gets very congested. Meadow Creek is, there's a lot of parking along the road, along within these short driveways, and it's a fairly major thoroughfare coming into there. There's some large developments that dump out of there. Chain of Rock does not have that.
Mr. Kraft, could you summarize, please, your photos? You've gone well beyond the 10 minutes and I realize you were asked to explain the photos. Could you summarize?
Yeah, just simply, I just wanted to bring those two pictures forward is, that's not the development that we want over on Chain of Rock. The last picture in here, again, this is, this is our home that's located on there. If I can't build in the back, I'm not going to build a garage in front of my house. I didn't buy a chalet home to be able to sit in and stare out at the back wall of a garage. So, I mean, my remedy is I either have a garage or I don't have a garage at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Kraft. Are there any other questions, the board? Thank you. With that, we will open it up for public testimony. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Could you please state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Vern Moeller, M-O-E-L-L-E-R. I am adjacent neighbor to the west. I actually...
I'm sorry, could you spell that one more time?
M-O-E-L-L-E-R.
Thank you, Mr. Moeller.
Moeller.
Thanks.
Deutsch.
It's late, I guess, thank you.
I'm the neighbor to the west. I'm the one that originally bought the whole lot and subdivided it. And original neighbors, like the present neighbor, use that front paved area for their own use, although in the pictures that I suppose you have, it looks as though it's a garage, a door, and a motorhome garage facing east. Actually, what that is is a motorhome garage door only. All the rest of that is just a wall. I don't actually use that front lot area and I feel the only natural place for him to build a garage is between us and in fringe upon my property line. I don't have a problem with any of it. It's a good move.
Thank you. Are there any questions by the board, Mr. Moeller? Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
None. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Does the applicant have any rebuttal? Mr. Kraft has indicated he does not. With that, the matter rests with the board. Could I have a positive motion on this case, please? Ms. Williams.
In case number 2012-081, I move we grant a variance from AMC 21.40.030G.3 to allow a 660-square-foot two-car garage to encroach nine feet or 90 percent into, at the nearest point, into the 10-foot rear yard setback in the R1A district, subject to conditions one through three on page five of the staff packet.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Do we have a second? Ms. Denny, you've indicated you would second the motion.
Yes, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Ms. Williams.
I do intend to support this motion. I disagree with staff on standard one. I do think that standard is at least partially met. The property is somewhat slope-affected and clearly it does serve as a drainage point for properties in the area, which sets it apart from other, from the other, the other properties. Standard two, I also disagree with staff and believe that that standard is at least partially met. If the variance isn't granted, the petitioner would not be able to have a garage or would have to locate it in the front yard, which is something that none of the properties, as evidenced by the picture that he has presented to us, shows, none of the other properties had to have garages in the front or don't have garages in the front. Standard number three, I disagree with staff. I do believe that this standard is at least partially met due to the odd shape of the property compared to other properties in the area. Standard four, I also agree, or disagree with staff and believe that that standard is at least partially met. The most affected neighbor is supportive of the variance request and there do not appear nor reported any kind of safety issues with the location of the garage in that area. Standard five, I agree with staff that that standard is met. This is a dimension and not a use variance. Standard six, I also agree that that standard is met for the reasons described for standard four and explained by staff. And standard seven, I disagree with staff. I believe that that standard is at least partially met. It is a large encroachment, but the garage itself is as small as possible to allow two cars to park in there. So, for those reasons, I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Denny?
Yes, I also intend to support the motion. I agree with Ms. Williams in that there are some peculiarities to the lot and to the adjacent road and therefore the drainage and the runoff would probably severely limit the positioning of any other structure. And, well, in standard number two, I disagree with staff. I do believe that there is a slight topography issue in that the lot itself appears to be lower than the surrounding road and would therefore be impacted by the aforementioned Standard number three, I disagree with staff and I believe that it's not self-imposed, that the size of the lot and the placement of the existing structure limit the placement of a garage in any other than the proposed location. Standard number four, I don't believe it would be injurious to the neighborhood. He always, he already has total cooperation from his nearest neighbor and I also believe that the adjacent neighbors would not be happy with having a garage in the front yard and taking away from the appearance of the secluded rural area by not having structures that closely to the road. Agree with staff that standard five is met. And standard number six, I agree with Ms. Williams in that that size of a garage is probably the minimum for a two-car garage and it's, a garage in almost any form is pretty much a necessity and looks like one that's enjoyed by all of his neighbors. So, I don't believe that... Standard seven, I do believe standard seven is met. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Are there other comments from any of the board members? Mr. Vig.
Thank you. I think the applicant did a good job of explaining with regard to standard number four, the impacts of denying the variance. Were he to build a garage in his, in front of his house, may require an additional driveway which would, I think, have a more adverse impact on adjacent properties than construction of the garage in the back. And so, I wanted to get that on the record. I think that there would be an impact from that alone, so I also intend to support the motion.
Mr. Fink.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just following up on Mr. Vig's comments, I thought the applicant did a great job in the presentation and I want to compliment him on that. It was very thorough and detailed and I agree with the other board members' comments as to the standards and I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Are there any other comments from any board members? Any comments at all? Well, I, I'm gonna, I actually don't feel I will be supporting the motion. I appreciate the comments of the applicant and the person from the adjacent resident. I'm a little concerned regarding standards four and seven in that we've, there's an agreement between these two property owners regarding access and maintenance, but I'm concerned with future civil matters between maybe two less civil adjacent property owners. So, I don't find that standard four is met. I think it could adversely affect the adjacent property of the west. And while a two-car garage would be nice, I think a one-car garage could get built that wouldn't need the variance request. So, I don't find that standard seven is met. So, I do not intend to support the motions, finding those two standards aren't met. If there's no other comments, please vote. That motion passes by a vote of six to one. For the record, every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court.
Chairman, I need to excuse myself. I know we have a few minutes left, but it is 9:15 and I've got to go, so...
Thank you, Mr. Fink. For the record, Mr. Fink is leaving at the, after hearing our last case. Thank you for your attendance. Reports, I have no report. Does our secretary have any report? Mr. McLaughlin, do we have any staff information on next month's hearings?
Um, you know...
Case load?
I can't recall.
Can't recall as in we might not have any?
Well, I have, I have...
Oh, what does this mean? Is this the list of all the cases? Holy cow!
I have two cases on the next agenda, but I'm not sure how many others are there.
All these? One, two, three, four, five. It's a big, long page. Seven pages. Seven cases, I mean, I'm sorry, seven pages. Okay. As far as board members' attendance at next month's hearing, the 9th of August, does anyone know for sure if they will be out? Okay. I know, I know. Yeah. Well, with that, does any, are there any comments from any board members? Mr. Ron, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, but no. Great job tonight.
Why, thank you. Ms. Williams? No comments? Mr. Vig?
I don't know if this is a first, but the five cases we heard tonight were all seeking a variance in advance of an action. Nobody was coming here tonight to ask for forgiveness and...
So, we're doing a good job of getting the message out, right?
Maybe they're intimidated, I don't know.
Yeah. Mr. Patrick?
I'm just happy to be here.
Oh, that's good. Ms. Denny, any comments? Okay. With that, we're adjourned. See you next month.